The regular Evans City Council meeting scheduled for 5:00 PM July 11, 2017 will all come to order. Roll call. Here.
Commissioner Lillis.
Here.
Commissioner Hadrava.
Here.
Mayor Visalvich.
Here.
Approval of minutes City Council workshop, May 23rd, a minutes. Approval of minutes City Council special meeting, May 23rd. Approval of minutes, a City Council meeting June 6th, and approval of the minutes City Council meeting workshop, June 21st. No one has any changes or questions? Call for a motion. Prove these minutes. Sub move. Motion made by Coivinen, do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Lillis. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item D, approval of agenda. Everyone has a revised agenda with the attachments. Let's add a number, item number 15, I don't think that's on your bill's letter.
Yeah, I wrote 15.
Yeah, I had a letter here from Bill Ayo, we all have a copy concerning Monument, we'll put that as item 15 under new business. Anybody else have any deletions or additions to the minutes? If not, call for a motion that we approve the agenda as printed.
Sub move.
Motion made by Hoag. Seconded by Hadrava. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carried. No appointments or presentations at this time. We allow any visitors in the audience to address the council for five minutes, and if you'd like to take that time, just come on up to the podium, introduce yourself, and you have the floor.
My name is Virginia Park, I'm here with my friend Betty Kennedy, and my question for the council is, there had been a couple of articles in the paper about dismantling the Holiday Inn and building townhouses up there. I am wondering if there's been any progress on that.
Well, what we know, the county, I think, Jackie, correct me if I'm wrong, is putting out, letting the bids out in August, and the county commissioners told me they want that thing down by the end of October.
Okay.
So, once that's done, then we'll proceed to acquire the property and decide how we will divvy up the space for whatever we want to do, but there will be some open meetings on that.
Okay, and will that be in the newspaper then?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Because I think we'll just post a separate ad on that, because it's quite, we own other property up there too, and with that property, it's going to give us a pretty good sized chunk of land.
Okay.
So, we should probably, before the end of the year, I would think, have possession of it, because the county is taking care of the demo.
All right.
It's kind of, we're waiting, but...
So, have you talked to anybody about building up there? Is there anybody interested in that?
We had some feelers out, and we talked, we got a pretty good idea of what we want to do, but we haven't finalized anything.
Okay.
Because once we get the property, what we're looking for is some input, public input on that, what maybe is a priority, and I know we've had some assisted living up there too, we had some interest, so there's, I think we'll fill the space up pretty fast, and just decide what people in town would like to see there. There's probably room for some retail space, because there's quite a few acres up there now we have.
Okay, so you definitely will be putting up townhouses up there?
Probably where Carter Circle is, to expand off of there, because now we own all the land around it.
Okay.
But, like I say, I think we'll have a, you know, public meeting on that, and we'll probably have it at the auditorium, so it's pretty easy for everybody to get into.
Okay.
And have some drawings of the property, once we have everything laid out, so you can get a kind of a visual picture of what's going on.
Okay.
Get some input on that, and what we're thinking, what everybody else is thinking, because it's a big chunk of property, and if we're going to do something, we like to do it just once, make sure we do it right, make the right steps, because we've been waiting six years to get that.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much.
But, yeah, we will have a public meeting on that, once it's acquired, we have it. So, we've got four acres up there, we picked up, that's behind Five Seasons, that was part of that Holiday Inn property, so, once they demo it, then we'll proceed with the acquisition of the county.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Well, thank you. Anyone else? If not, then I'll proceed with the consent agenda. Approval of payroll, May 16 through the 31st, June 1st through the 15th, June 16 through the 30th. Approval of claims, June 2017, and request for water, wastewater operator to attend Wastewater Treatment Annual Conference, Grand Rapids, July, he's already been there. I know he hasn't, though, I think it's June. July 26th through the 28th, I think that's regular training we send them through, isn't it Scott?
Yes, so, continue the education.
Anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? If not, call for a motion that we approve the consent agenda as it is.
Sub move.
Motion made by Hoag, do I have support?
I'll support it.
Support by Hadrava, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carried. We have no public hearings, no unfinished business. Under new business, letter from the Evans Alks Lodge for Cruz Evans Car Show and Corn Feed Committees regarding the car show on August 25th. I think it's the usual, whatever they need there. Scott, your department's probably well aware what they're looking for there, and Tim, yours too. I guess last year, that was the biggest one they had.
Well, it keeps getting bigger.
It does, I heard the line for the feed was all the way down to the main street, going across, which works out pretty good. Anybody have any questions or recommendations here for Cruz, or we'll just let Scott and Tim take care of things like that, what are you going to do for that? Do we have to take any action on this, Jackie, or not?
Well, you don't have, you can just recognize that you saw the letter.
Item number two, mutual aid agreement with the City of Chisholm regarding police department personnel. Tim, is that something new then with Chisholm? I know we have that with other towns.
Mayor and council, this year, the City of Chisholm has our annual fair, but they're also having an all-class reunion. Chief Manner has reached out to our area law enforcement and cities, inquiring if we could assist them with extra personnel for both of these events. They have the fair and the street dance in one night, and his personnel just doesn't cover it. So, upon some discussion, I worked a little bit with Joe, we've come up with a memo of understanding for, similar to what we did with Gilbert, we would upfront the money, but then I would invoice for any costs for the manpower for that evening, and then they would invoice us back, so...
Yeah, I would just soon do that, have them invoice like we did in the past, just pay the guys regular.
Correct.
Anybody on the council have any questions, or? It's nice to see everybody trying to help each other out. Call for a motion that we approve the mutual aid agreement with the City of Chisholm.
Sub move.
Motion made by Lillis, do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Hoag, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number three, memorandum of understanding with law enforcement labor services regarding part-time officers. Tim, you got any clarification on that for us?
Mayor and council, obviously, blight is a big issue with the city come spring and summer. It's an issue that it's hard to keep grasp of, so upon doing a lot of soul searching, we do have two part-time officers. Upon discussing it with the entire department, we want to give this a try, is utilizing these two part-time officers to come in eight to 12 hours a week. Those two will handle all blight complaints. If there's an immediate complaint that needs to come up, we will handle it, but normally those same two officers will start the complaint, they'll follow through the complaint, and they'll finish it if it take it, or whatever needs to be done on the complaint. It alleviates our guys a lot of times, we have been busy, and it also, I think, will give us a little bit more consistent nature in dealing with the blight problem in town. We are on week number three, and it's working quite well right now. So, because this is overtime hours, and it is a change from the current contract that we have in place, that's why I'm bringing it forward, I asked for Joel's assistance again, and we have come up with this, it is a trial basis just for this year, and we'll reexamine it at the end of the season how it works.
Well, chasing after that blight isn't the most desirable duty, so it should fall to the bottom of the pecking order, who's ever there?
Yeah, I can well imagine, certainly not something that everybody's jumping and up and down to go and do, so...
Are we going to create a new office just for our two heroes?
We do have, there is a, I believe, still in the mailbox, if anybody wants to write down a blight complaint, they can put it in the mailbox, or call the police department, or you can even put it in the parking ticket with any complaint that you might have, and we do have a folder for those two officers to follow up on. I haven't had a whole lot of complaints from my, the full-time officers on this issue, so we're hoping it works out well.
Anybody else have any questions for Tim? Otherwise, call for a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding with law enforcement labor services.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have support?
I'll support.
Motion made by Hadrava, support by Coivinen, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number four, quotation for repairing golf course deck. Wasn't that kind of what we were talking about? 10 grand area for that? Because it's some major structural work there, yeah.
It's all the structural stuff underneath there, they need to fix it.
Yeah, I mean, it's blocked off.
Yeah.
This look good to you, Scott, from out there? This quote going to take care of what we need?
Yes.
They're going to do that this year?
Yes. Do you remember they put benchmarking structural engineering over there? Book that deck, and kind of going by the structural engineer said, this is what, for the last special meeting, or the... Set out for a different information, also going to receive by the...
Okay, because I think this was the price range we were talking about, we brought it up earlier. Well, make a recommendation and call for motion that we accept the quote from 3D Construction, $12,899.
Sub move.
Motion made by Hoag, do I have support?
I'll support it.
Support by Hadrava, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item J5, pay request number five from Range Cornus Heating and Sheet Metal, amount of $1,900 for Evans Auditorium air conditioning installation. Call for a motion that we approve this pay request?
Sub move.
Motion made by Coivinen, do I have a support?
Is this the last one?
No, we had a few more. These are pay requests, not change orders now. Don't get mixed up. Are you making a second on that?
I will make a second on that.
Support by Hadrava, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Number six, pay request number six, and the final from Range Cornus Heating and Sheet Metal, amount of $3,951.75 for auditorium air conditioning installation.
Sub move.
Motion made by Hoag to pay these guys, and do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Coivinen, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Number seven, pay request number one from Northland Flooring and Design, an amount of $37,625 for Evans Auditorium flooring. I couldn't believe the difference that carpeting made in that building when I was there for the concert.
It's beautiful in there.
Just, oh, unbelievable. It really made it, looked like something else. Anybody have any questions or anything on that? Call for a motion that we approve the pay request for Northland Flooring?
Sub move.
Motion made by Lillis, do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Hoag, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Pay request, item number eight, pay request number one from Utility Systems of America, an amount of $84,934.28, 2017 Street Improv. This is the West Evans Project, isn't that Rod?
Correct.
Okay. How's that one going out there?
They're making really good progress, despite it wasn't paid on by...
The only grumbling I heard, they're using some of that red ore, or fill, or something.
Or some stuff, they need some sugar, but it's got covered up for...
Yeah, that was the only negative comment I heard on the whole project there. Everybody thought it was going pretty good. If no one has any questions, call for a motion that we approve pay request number one for Utility Systems of America?
Sub move.
Made by Coivinen, do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Hoag, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number nine, invoice from Joel and Sop Escivating, an amount of $10,613.98 for emergency replacement of storm sewer culvert on Industrial Park Drive. Well, there's plenty of parking on a frontage road, I don't know why we had to...
Yeah.
Can we assess them?
Oh, yeah, that's an assessment, yeah, that's...
For the whole amount.
That's just one of those things, you know?
You know, it's one of the emergency things that happen, there's nothing we can do about it, so if that, I'll make a motion.
I think Mindot had one on the Five Seasons side last year.
Yep.
I think came then. Yeah, what are you going to do? Well, call for a motion that we pay Joel and Sop?
Sub move.
Motion made by Coivinen, do I have a support?
Support.
Support by Lillis, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Item number 10, resolution accepting donations for the library in the memory of Ellen Rosie from Kathy China, Thomas and Gloria Lovato, Paul Persons, Joe Rosie, and Mark Rosie.
Boy, they keep coming in for her.
You know, the library does good, and so does the dog.
Yeah, the dog's short.
They make a lot of money.
Unless they forgot to put them on this time. Well, Ellen's been there a lot of years, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
She's kind of an icon up there, everybody remembers her. Call for a motion that we accept their resolution?
Sub move.
Motion made by Coivinen, do I have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Hoag, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number 11, recommendation to hire fighter fighters and EMTs. Peter Klobachek, Kaylee Fellows, Ella Rose Capus. Well, you guys are keeping up with the demand there.
Well, we've been trying to keep the numbers up, looks like we're going to have some further transition, especially with the ambulance service, but do our very best to keep on top of things. I have to comment again on the quality of the folks that are volunteering to step forward and take positions, both with the ambulance service as well as the volunteer fire department. Pete Klobachek has been with us previously, and he left town for a while, and now he's back, so we were happy to welcome him back. These other candidates for EMT positions are very, very well-received as well, there's some very well-rounded, nice people that we're happy to have on the service. So, with that, I guess I would make a motion to hire Pete Klobachek, Kaylee Fellows, and Ella Rose Capus.
And since I got to do the interviewing too with Counselor Lillis, I will support that, because they're a fine asset to what they're in for.
Motion made by Lillis, support by Coivinen, I said, you know, I got to commend you guys, you've been keeping on top of this, getting it done. You and Scott, Nikki, I mean, it's, you know, you get kind of a turn at departments, it's a good training department, from what I hear, because a lot of these guys move out to full-time departments, out of the area, too.
Yeah.
They move a lot, the younger ones.
Yep, what we've been seeing with ambulance services, there's quite a few applicants that are moving on to the paramedic positions in other locales, so they come here and get their feet wet, and get some good training, and move on, unfortunately, but that's the nature of the beast.
It is, and I appreciate you guys getting on top of this and doing the interviews and making the recommendations, because it's one of those things you have to keep at it. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Item number 12, discuss compliance with local ordinance for Section 8 voucher properties. This blight and stuff just drives me crazy, and, you know, it really drives me crazy, it's, you got the good renters, and you got the slum lords, and they're bad. I've got one next to me, this guy lives in the cities. He comes up once a month, makes sure the grass is cut, house is painted, he's sited it, and, I mean, it's really an asset to the neighborhood. And he don't have a problem not being in the area, taking care of it, then go across the alley, and we got the other end of the ruler, and I don't have to tell you who owns the house.
And they're from town. I called the chief matter of fact the other day, and I says, I'm driving around, and I'm looking, and I think one of these landlord owns like five of the lots that I was complaining about. And I don't know what the problem is, I know that what we started a while back, because we had some lots that we just went and cut them and sent them a bill.
Well, then you've got that abomination.
And then they start going, oh, boy.
You got that abomination on Cary Ab, that burnt-out house, drove by there today, what is, they're going to rent that out? Well, I would like some support from the council, that we send the letter to Congressman Nolan, Senators Franken and Klobuchar about the Section 8 housing money? If those landlords are not in compliance with city ordinances, then they should be disqualified until they come into line, and let the good landlords get that business. Because I can't see how they can spend our tax dollars to violate our ordinances. These people can do that if they want. Sure they can, they're just profiteering, and the county can't handle it, it's too big. The town should handle it. Council and the police department, if you're in violation of any of our ordinances, that's about 800 bucks a month. You see how fast they'll shape up? Because when you've got a yard with foot-high grass and a toilet sitting in the front, a used toilet, I mean, there's no reason for that. And they laugh about it.
And I'm 100% support with this, and I think there's probably about 100-plus other communities in Minnesota that would commend St. Evans for taking this initiative.
It doesn't cost any money, you know, Hurd would have to just tweak a few things, or maybe they don't, Joel, I don't know. If they're using tax dollars, these people are violating our ordinances, they shouldn't get the money.
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea to send the letter.
Yeah, and I would like to look the legalities of it, because every town's got the same problem, it's getting worse.
I think there'd be a lot of other communities on board with this.
And it's not, I don't want to say it's not a big problem, because we do have a lot more problems in town, but it is a big problem. You know, your neighbors that are keeping their lawns cut and everything nice, and then you have, and excuse my language, but then you have a shit hole next to it. That is wrong, you know, but they have so, so much time, by the time they get through, and we finally get to it, it's two months, and they'd rather pay a person $100 a time to cut it twice, because then they're done for the year. It's cheaper than buying a lawn mower.
Well, the only way to make these people shape up is you've got to hit them in a wallet.
Yep.
If they're not getting that $800 a month rent. Houses got broken windows, there's people, families living in there, I mean, there's a lot of places that, the reason I get so upset, you've got the guy next to me, place looks perfect, they wouldn't even know it's a rental, it's a duplex. I mean, if he can do it, and he lives out of the area, there's no reason the others can't. And like I say, I just don't see how they can violate our ordinances and still collect that money.
I'm in, I'm in support 100% as well, I recognize the impact that it has on the citizens that live next door to the place, the properties like that, and I also recognize the expense and the time that is spent by the city chasing these problems down. I mean, police department alone spends countless hours that could be better spent doing other things, it's just, it's a travesty, it's like a dog chasing its tail. You know, you have to have due process, but, you know, the end result, to get the desired result, might take years, and you may never get there, you may never get there. You know, we have some glaring examples of that.
Well, Brian, you and Tim know exactly the amount of time and effort, that's why we have the part-time guys now taking care of that, but I think if you, you could bypass the system, you just don't get the money if you're not in compliance with your ordinance, period. Until you bring yourself into line, because it's not that they can't do it, they don't want to do it. And another, another one is some of these properties that are in such bad shape, caving in basements, you got eve boards hanging down, rain gutters, you get a heavy wind, that stuff is going to blow on the sidewalk, and that's a public safety concern. And Joel, are we kind of responsible for some of that stuff, taking some action? Because some of that stuff's going to land on a public sidewalk, you know?
Yep, so, there are, there are things you can do for hazardous buildings, and require through the blight process, or through some other reporting arm to the city to make the city aware, and the city can then require the owner of the hazardous building, any kind of hazardous condition like that, to either get it repaired, or the city can take the action and do it, and then assess the cost to the homeowner.
You think...
There's a process you have to go through in order to, you know, register that as a hazardous building and meet that threshold.
And ask for an action plan on what they're going to do?
Yep.
Anybody have objection? If, pick out a few, and then have Joel send the letters? Because, you know, if you send them with your law for, in a return address, people start looking at that a little more seriously.
Yep, so there's a...
Than you do from the city.
And there's a whole process that you go through for hazardous buildings, to get those hazardous situations dealt with. I can put that together.
You've got some basements caving in, and it's affecting the neighbor's property, and stuff just swinging at aluminum, you get a heavy wind, it's going to end up on a sidewalk, it's probably hit somebody or another vehicle, and I just don't want to put us in a liability position. And, I mean, this isn't recent history, these places have been dilapidated, nobody lives in most of them, these are hoarders, they store garbage in them.
Yep.
I mean, the strongest position we could take, I would like to see, and let the chips fall where they may.
I have a list of about 10 properties, Mayor, that I think are, need immediately addressing. I can talk with Attorney Lewicki on those and see what we can do.
I think it's time to take the gloves off with these people, because, I mean, it's just like talking to that bench over there, some of them. Tell you go after their wallet, that's the only time you get a reaction.
Well, if this money goes through, Mayor, and this deal with his ordinances go through, we will finally make a first step at Kirby and some of them. It's been a long time coming, we've discussed it in multiple different ways, we've had our chief and everybody in court doing different things against different people, and they know the ins and the outs.
You know, you want...
They know what they have to minimally do to keep us off their backs.
They know how, the time schedules.
And it's just time to make a good, solid move forward.
I think if we look at the house on Garfield Street, the one that we just took down recently, that was about three to four years in the process, so, I mean, it is a lengthy process once we start from the time we started to the time it takes it down.
You know that, that house that we just took down, oh, what is it, on Summit Street?
Oh, the big corner hall, yeah.
Yes, now, did we sell that to somebody?
Yes.
Well, then, why don't you send them a letter to clean up that lot? Because that's another one, and it's up to your waist or higher, so...
The grass just got cut, I drove by.
Okay, because that was ridiculous.
I was looking at that, too.
We sent the guy out yesterday, the grass was...
Okay, so, we cut it then?
We cut it.
Oh, we cut it, they didn't.
Maybe we should let them know that that's their property now, and they have to cut it.
Did they pay for it yet?
I didn't really cut it till...
I mean, did they pay for the...
I guess I was all bad, because I didn't do it, we owned, stole the lot, we were two guys.
Well, I'm glad you cut it.
Yeah, I'm glad you cut it.
We just need to see if we own it, or if they own it, finally.
Did we do the title work for that lot, and collect the money?
Joel drafted the deed, but I can call her and bill her.
Because whatever she bid on the lot, I don't know if she paid us yet for that.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Oh, okay.
I don't, yeah, I don't think we're looking to get paid, we just want it done.
So, we bill?
So, she moves it from the...
We bill other people. When I have to hire somebody to go mow lawns, I turn it over to Chris Mackey, Tim gives it to me, and we bill people.
Right, but the confusion here is whether it was ours or theirs at the time.
That's the biggest complaint in this community.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yep, that's the biggest complaint you got, and I don't blame anybody for...
You know, there was a few of them that I had to go in and do some work with, and I could see where the neighbors are mad, because I had everything running out of there from squirrels, to moles, to mice, to some, I don't even know what they are, but they're just all over in there, and to get into there, they have to go through everybody's yard, and it's just a mess on some of them. You know, I feel sorry for the... You know, I feel sorry for the, the people that have to put up with it. You know, and if we can get any way into it to, they can get into their pocketbook so they can't get money and make them cut their grass, then I'm in full support, let's do it.
Well, a lot of these section eight housing, the landlords don't cut the grass or do anything and that's our tax dollars paying the rent, so we're not getting a bang for our buck. Those people should have a decent place to live because most of them have kids.
And Mayor and Council, one thing I've, over the last two years what I've really been finding out is some of the houses that have gone up for foreclosure where the people have just walked away from them and it's gone back to the bank or the mortgage companies. We have one on Grant Avenue in a thousand block, since I've been here that we've been cutting the grass and it is almost nearly impossible to try to talk to somebody in another state about this property that I don't even know if they realize they have. And, and there are numerous ones that we have in this town that we've been trying to, you know, get ahold of them to let them know, you know, you need to keep up on these properties. But it's like talking to the wall. And so these are some of the properties that we've been forced to go in and actually have somebody cut.
You know, on a property like that, should maybe have Joel send them a letter because it'll go right to their legal department and bill them like ten grand. They'll get a phone call when they see something like that. Yeah, if you, if you cut it for a number, here's not that we're gonna get ten grand, but if they see a big number, I guarantee you, you'll get a phone call because it'll go right to their legal department.
So is, is there a way we can pass like a city ordinance or something? Recommending that these people put their mortgage company's name on a list, you know, for we know who owns it, we do the taxes, shouldn't we know who the mortgage company is? So if they do walk away from it, we can go after them, Joe? I mean, half the time, we, we know that one up on Cleveland or Summit, right? We traced it back to a military loan. And we don't have no clue who gave the military loan, but it's, it was a VA loan and now it's in our hands and it's, it's garbage.
Well, they're selling these contracts, that's the trouble, these mortgage companies. They'll batch a bunch and sell them. That's why you got a hard, Tim's got a hard time getting ahold of anybody. Brian, you know that too. No one knows what they got when they do these big sales. No idea what's involved.
That's right, so at least if they gave us a name, we'd have something on.
I think it might, as the mayor indicated, it might be a, such thing that the mortgage is gonna be sold three, four times.
Yep.
I understand, I understand that, I understand that, but it's still, it's where do we look? You know, that's where do we look for the owners?
It's tough, it's really difficult.
Who do we bill? You know? Counties don't know, we don't know, nobody knows.
Usually the legal departments, if they get a letter from another attorney, they look at that, that much of it, you know?
If it's county tax forfeit, wouldn't that be the counties?
Yep.
Not necessarily do they know, until it goes through their process, do they know who the mortgage company was?
I mean, but they might be sitting in their roles for quite a while, then before it goes to auction.
Counselor Hadra, with the house on Summit Street that you're talking about, will be going up on forfeiture this fall. I did have a, we did build the bank and we'll see how that works for the cutting. And he asked me what kind of shape the property was in and I said, if you walk in the front door, you go right into the basement. The whole property should be demolished and I told the, the finance company that this, but they don't understand sitting hundreds of miles away behind a desk.
Can we require the owners to post that property? It's unsafe. Make people aware? If you go through this process?
That's a lengthy process to require that. Like the chief was saying, there are a lot of property rights that are protected. And so you have to be very aware of those as we go forward on any of these things and some of the things that have been discussed. The good ideas, I think the understanding is that the city's pretty frustrated with it. There are other avenues that we can go through and one would be diligently following up on the blight complaints and, you know, assessing those civil fines. Some of the other things that have been discussed, I would request authorization from the council, look into the legalities of those things. I've not, I've not researched some of the specific things that have been brought up and I'd be happy to do that for the council. But I think there are some things that we can do to, to step up our game a little bit on enforcing those things also.
Well, you know, I like shortcuts, I always did. And if we skip a few steps, what's the worst thing that can happen? We, we go to court, they gotta pay attorneys? You can't do that, that's the worst thing that can happen? But if they know we're on their backs kind of quickly and it's not, we're not going away. I mean, like I say, it's time to take the gloves off. What's the worst that can happen? Oh, you guys can't do that? Oh, okay. Start over again. But I mean, push the cart along a little bit because they're not talking about any frickin' liability to get nailed with. I mean, it's time to take the gloves off because these people are upsetting a lot of other people.
And it's the same people every year.
It is.
That's, that's pounding our head against this wall over here.
Yeah, that's, well, that, that's my harangue for tonight. I'll move on to item thirteen, St. Louis County Community Block Grant Development Program. We finally got the okay on that. Call for a motion that we approve this agreement with the county for the CDBG grant that we are using on Jackson Street.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Hadra, I'd have a support. No support. Support by Coivin. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number fourteen, bids for 2017 sanitary sewer improvement project. Jola and Saab in one hundred ninety-eight thousand fifty-six dollars. And that is for the Jackson Street project and that's who we just approved the agreement for.
I'll make that motion.
Anybody have any questions? Brad, you're making a motion, we accept the bid from Jola and Saab?
Yes.
For that project? We have a support?
I'll support.
Support by Hoag. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item fifteen. Bill, would you like to come up here and give us a little rundown, what your ideas are?
Bill, I O, ten eighty Industrial Park Drive, and I'm here this evening representing the Ellet Heritage Committee. I have given the council a letter from the Heritage Committee. Did I miss any one? I hope I haven't. Jackie? Did you get one? And if I may, I'd like to read the letter. Dear Mayor, Reverend Glassalovich, and City Council members. This year marks Ellet's one hundred twenty-fifth anniversary. Just west of Northside Park was a large folder on cement base placed by Joseph Begdanovich in nineteen sixty-seven. I hope I pronounced that correctly. This site marks the first building in log cabin in Ellet. Built in October eighteen ninety-two in the mining camp of David T. Adams and Neil McGinnis. The Ellet Heritage Committee requests to place a descriptive marker at this site. We are considering either a bronze plaque anchored to the holder or a freestanding wooden sign similar to any Minnesota state park. We are seeking your input and permission to proceed with designing the sign and vendor to build and install same. The marker should be installed by October twenty-seventeen, exactly the month of the city's one hundred twenty-fifth anniversary. We ask for your support in this historic project commemorating an important milestone in the history of our community. And I'd like to add one thing. Part of this research in this letter was done by Tucker Nelson. I want to give him credit as well. So that's our thought and our plan and we'd like the council approval on your thoughts and proceed.
Well, what do we?
Well, I'm all for it. I mean, I've, I've read about that in, I don't know, some heritage or some historical write-up or something. So I actually had to drive down to see this rock. So I know what rock you're talking about, it's that big?
Yes.
Little piece of taconite or whatever?
Yes.
Right in that big grassy area.
Nobody knows where it is, okay? And we'd like to simply recognize it, you know? It's the first building in Ellet.
I don't know if that, how long that building was there. I'm trying to think if I remember when I was a kid if that building was there.
Well, we did find a photo of a log cabin on that site and that's the only thing we have found.
Found what?
I, we found a photo of a log building on that site that's the only thing we can come across.
Well, it's kind of in the old neighborhood, you know, that's, that's, it kind of jogs my memory here, but.
Your childhood home?
You know what the doghouse is? So Bill, you're looking for our okay to?
Well, yeah, we're looking for your permission and guidance. If you have any thoughts in that area, fine, we'd like to consider them.
I think it's a wonderful thing you're doing there. I think anytime we can recognize some historic landmark in the fashion that you're doing it, it's just more people are gonna be interested and go in to look at it and they'll understand what it's all about. So I, I commend you. Appreciate that very much.
Okay. Well, we're trying to bring Ellet some ethos in the community and recognition and we gotta start.
It'd be nice one day to have a map of the historic sites in the community. At some point when we get everything cataloged and identified.
I got a smile on my face.
Well, I can call for a motion that we approve your request and we'll give you a hand with that.
Okay.
Support? Motion made by Lilis, support by Hadra. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Well, Bill, that'll be one of the first and other many projects you guys have, eh?
Well, we've got some great irons in the fire, you know, and we gotta start completing some. And so what, I think they're just telling me that we will proceed with a design. I don't know which we have, this is in our infancy. We don't know the cost, bronze versus wooden, so we'll research all that and we'll come up with some thoughts.
Well, thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, that concludes our agenda. Anybody have any commissioner reports or committees?
Well, Bill, you know, feel free to jump in. We had our HR meeting last month and we discussed the, the audit and everything, rest assured everything is looking really good for the HR. Doing a fine job up there.
We are operating at about ninety, I don't remember, high nineties percentage. So that's what ain't always happening like that.
So is hope.
With regard to the EDA, and this is something you could also jump in if you would so desire, but you know, I don't know if many people are aware that the EDA oversees Lincoln Place apartments. The report from Lincoln Place is generally always positive. I think we're currently at ninety percent occupancy right now and continuing to do a number of things up there to improve the property. One of the other issues that we discussed at our last meeting, and I'm sure you're gonna be pleased to hear that we are making strides towards having our downtown mural erected or, or set up by this fall. So that the mural that's on the, the wall of the Animals Building will be removed and replaced by a panel system. So it'll be a lot more easy to maintain and it should really add to that, that area down there. Another thing the EDA's been working on, and this, this is with some monies appropriated through grants, is, is coming to fruition and I guess Bill can report on that maybe later on when we get a little bit closer to the, sure.
Right now, we're in the process of changing mural. Hockey started through pond, pond hockey in the community. And we're researching a, where can we find a photo of pond hockey in Ellet? That's proving to be a little bit difficult. I talked to Chuck Demm from St. Cloud. He doesn't have any. He suggested maybe Iron World. So what I'm maybe asking for, if anyone in the community has a great photo of pond hockey, we would be interested. We do have a sketch that's provided to us by the artist on a proposal for the mural. But I think we're still, we're still kind of looking. And George Walters is a chair of that committee as well. So I'm excited. We're looking at some other things as well within the community in relation to hockey, maybe some statues in the community to commemorate, you know, Ellet has a great history. No one, no one in this country has a history that we have in terms of hockey for fifty, sixty, seventy years. So we can bring that forward, give the city some more ethos and community members, previous community members some recognition. That would be great.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay.
Brian, you got anything else?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Joel, you got anything to add?
Well, I think the chief and everybody else is gonna say it, but I'm also gonna say it too. The Fourth of July went off this year excellent, you know, more people than we've ever had. Fireworks went off great, so the long list of, you know, to thank everybody, the city staff, the, you know, the police department, the Fourth of July Committee, you know, John lighting fireworks off. I mean, it's a whole team effort all the way down to the band, you know, and, and I think if, when it gets to the chief, he will tell you that with all the people in town, we didn't have any problems. It was, I mean, of course you'll have a couple little incidences, but when you got ten, twelve thousand people in town, that's not too bad. So I just want to say thank you to everybody that was involved with it and actually even the patrons that came out. You know, they were well behaved, they did great and just thank you, you know? Ellet's put on a map for the Fourth for a reason and that's because of all the use.
Brian, do you have anything to add?
I'd just like to echo Counselor Coivin's sentiments on that. Thanks to all you folks for your hard work. There's one other item, I just want to give a plug for the Business Energy Retrofit Program since there's actually a informational meeting coming to the city of Ellet that's gonna be held at, right here at the council chambers on Tuesday, July twenty-fifth at twelve PM and it runs till one PM. And what the Business Energy Retrofit Program does, it's a grant program sponsored by IRRB, AOA, and the U.S. Department of Agriculture. And they're funding business grants, up to one-third of the total project cost, up to twenty thousand dollars per project for business or energy retrofitting and that could, it could be something like lighting or heating or windows or that type of thing. And really a good program if someone has a need and if you have any questions about that, please come to the meeting or you can call City Hall and I'm sure that they'd be able to, to give you some guidance on who you might need to speak with. With that, thank you, Mayor.
Bradley, you have anything?
Yeah, one is we are finishing up the hippodrome handicap seating if I remember right, all right? And that's gonna be new for this, this fall for hockey. And I think that's a big added plus for our hippodrome. Come on down and take a look at it. I think you guys will prove it's a good start. It's, it's a very nice thing. And I'd like to apologize to everybody here and out there. My asthma's acting up and of course I can't keep my big mouth shut because I got a cough. So I apologize for interrupting anybody. And that's it, Mayor.
I don't have much other than a little crisis beginning of the parade that no one was aware of. You know when the politicians are riding in the back of the pickups? Somebody came up to me, it was ten after nine, lock the keys in the pickup. I won't say who it is, but Tim came to the rescue and I said, you know what the odds of getting somebody here in twenty minutes? Tim came, got the vehicle open, so everything went on time. I didn't think you could lock the keys in these newer vehicles. You shut the door, but evidently you can. Thank you, Tim, because you didn't hold the parade up. You helped.
Well, I think it was so that it went on without a politician.
It was pretty funny. Well, that's all I have. Tim, you have anything else to add?
Mayor Council, just a couple things, just to repeat. First of all, over the Third and Fourth of July, we did have a lot of people in town. I would like to take my hats off to Jerry and Scott and the entire Public Works Department for the setup, the take-down. And when I was walking home down the main street on the Third of July morning at 4:00 AM, looking at the street going, oh, my God, what a mess. And I shut my eyes for two hours, and I woke up, and miraculously, it was spotless. I couldn't believe the great job that the crew did to clean up that street in the town. It looked great. I would like to also take my hats off to my entire staff, every officer, Sherry in the office. They did a fabulous job. Everything went off very, very well. We had minimal, minimal problems. It was great to see. I will take advantage of it this year. My hat's off to the Fourth of July Committee once again. They did an awesome job. Everything was very well organized. It just, it was very, very smooth. And most of all, I'd like to thank the public, the community, the visitors. They were all very well spirited. I couldn't ask for a better week. So, thank you very much. On another note, August 1st, first Tuesday of August, we have National Night Out 2017. There'll be more to come here in the very near future. But we are tentatively planning right now to have a gathering at the West Evlith Leonidas Community Center again, and that's going to be taking place from four o'clock to six o'clock. We are going to be having a gathering at the Northside Park in Evlith with the help of the ladies auxiliary. And that's going to be running five to seven PM. And then also, we're going to be having a gathering at the Vets Park, Ely Lake and Fale Township from six to eight. So, there'll be three venues that we're going to be doing this year, hot dogs and chips and pop and some prizes and some things for the kids. So, keep your eyes peeled for the newspaper, and if anybody wants to volunteer, please give me a call at the police department, and I can assist you in any way.
I want to commend you for setting this up, and I know one of the, historically, one of the things that I've heard regarding the National Night Out philosophy, if you will, is that there were a few people that would have liked to seen a venue in the city proper. So, thank you very much for arranging that. Thank you very much for your time and whoever's helping you with this, because that's a real, real important project. I mean, it's a deal where people get out, get an opportunity to meet other people in the neighborhood and in the community, as well as the people that serve on the police department, fire department, ambulance service, and so forth, and have some fun. A little bit of food involved and a lot of fun, and I think most of the agencies will have their various rigs on display. Possibly going to be a demonstration with the helicopter this year, or?
They haven't gotten back. I do have a request in forum, and I'm also going to talk with our canine handler. Maybe we'll see bear out in a boat. We'll see. We're still organizing, but things should be coming out here shortly.
Thanks again. And Mayor, do we need to change our meeting time?
Well, you know, I was just thinking about that now. Jackie, and you thought about going over the audit, starting a meeting half hour early? I wonder if we should have, just have a workshop? That's more convenient for everybody. Have the auditor come and just go over that, maybe?
Yeah, I'll give you another workshop. But that's National, and so you're like, you're changing meeting? Either have it four o'clock to start, the first one?
Yes, four to six.
You want to change the date period, maybe? Is that easier?
We can change it to Wednesday at five o'clock.
Should we do that?
Or have it earlier on Tuesday, whatever you folks?
You think, you guys think it's better just to set it for another day?
I'm sure you'll go to two o'clock, maybe come here, too?
You go. Could you be here at two o'clock on a Tuesday, August 1st, to do the videotaping if the council meeting's early because of National Night Out? Okay.
I may not be here.
Why not? You're retired.
I'm on vacation.
On vacation?
I just want to vacation. Now you're in trouble.
How does that work? When you're retired, you're on vacation.
My wife cooked me, wants to take me somewhere, so I got to go.
Now I heard everything. Scott, you have anything to add?
Yeah, just a reminder, within the next couple of weeks, the county will be in town, starting on the county roads, doing a scrub ceiling, so.
Okay.
They should start within, like I said, the next couple of weeks or so.
And people were asking about, what's a 101, about the construction, and we're still set for middle of August?
As far as I know, they still are set sometime in August.
There has been a lot of talk about that.
Rod, you have anything to add for us? Anybody have any questions, Rod? Now, Jackie, you have anything to add?
I do. I'm wondering if we're moving the meeting to Wednesday, the second, or doing it at two o'clock, the first?
Well, what's everybody's pleasure?
Wednesday may be better for me.
Are you working Wednesday?
I may be back.
Yeah, Wednesday. Or move it to the 12th? I'm, excuse me, I run month. Hold on.
I was going to say.
Yeah, eighth.
That would work for me.
My screen jumped. Would the eighth work for you?
Doesn't matter to me.
Because you don't?
How about you? You got to retire. You on vacation?
You on vacation again? Well, I'll ask my wife, but I think I'll be back in.
Should we shoot for the eighth, then? If it's okay with everybody?
It's for me.
Works for me. What else you have?
I don't have anything else. Thanks for asking.
Joel, you have anything to bring up?
I don't have anything there.
Steph, you have anything to add? Anyone from the audience have anything? If not, I'll adjourn the meeting.